Is now starting, all attendees are in listen only mode.
Okay, I'll call to order the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, February 23rd. And I'll turn off my video monitor. Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda tonight will be roll call.
Miller? Miller?
Here.
Risotto?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley? Malley? Euer?
Here.
Serone? Serone?
And Nick won't be here either.
And McFadden?
Here.
We have 12 out of 14.
Okay, necessary quorum for business. Okay, next up would be a reminder to please speak directly into your microphone, especially important tonight as we're having a little bit of sound issues here at City Hall. Um, next up would be items to remove, add or change. Do we have anything tonight? Nothing to be...
No, we do not.
Okay. Uh, item number four would be matters from the public for anything not on the agenda. Do we have anybody logged in tonight that wants to talk?
If you are logged into the meeting as an attendee and you would like to speak on matters not on the agenda, if you could please raise your hand. No.
No hands. Okay, and nobody here tonight, so. All right, up next then we'll go to the consent agenda. We have two things tonight. Um, item A is ordinance 21-17 amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map, 1320 Killian Drive, 1728 Weissrock Lane, uh, 1007 Edwards Drive, 700 Norcross Drive, uh, City Batavia applicant, and item B, which is ordinance 21-18 amendment to the official zoning map, 1320 Killian Drive, 1728 Weissrock Lane, 1007 Edwards Drive, 700 Norcross Drive, City Batavia applicant. Anybody have any comments or questions or anything on anything on the consent agenda? Now I'll make the motion that we recommend to council the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion by Wolf, second by Euer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent, Euer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. Um, up next is, uh, item number six, ordinance 21-15 amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map. 110, uh, or 106 to 110 North Redant Road, City Batavia applicant. Alderman Callahan, do you have these?
I do. Uh, number six and number seven are both related, both of these ordinances, 21-15 and 21-16, discussing mending the comprehensive plan land use map and the zoning map to classify the properties at 106 through 110 North Redant and the adjacent stormwater property, uh, as SB service business land use designation. Scott, do you have this, or Joel, do you have this in the room with any further?
Um, yes, I do. I can provide a little more background if that is what the committee wants.
Yes, please.
Um, okay, uh, staff periodically will evaluate land uses and zoning for properties to determine if there was a more appropriate classification to better balance the existing uses on the property and the neighborhood context. Uh, we have done this for detention areas. For tonight, we're looking at the property at 110 through 106 North Redant and the adjacent stormwater management piece. These properties are zoned LI light industrial, and the building on the property has been occupied by, uh, an automobile repair shop and offices for construction contractors for some time. The city initiated this rezoning, and there is no proposal for alternate use or any development on this property, nor has any change been contemplated. Uh, the property and the adjacent stormwater management property are under the same ownership, and they are the only properties in this area south of the railroad tracks with industrial zoning. The existing uses are in the building are allowed in the proposed SB service business zoning district, and this district is also located immediately west of this property on the west side of Redant Road. Staff feels this property should be considered for service business land use and zoning classifications. Uh, these classifications will increase the distance to nearby residences from land that allows light and general industrial uses. We will be removing those, um, allowed uses with the proposed rezoning. Um, regarding the land use map amendment, the existing uses in this building, in this 9,000 square foot building, fit the proposed service business land use designation. The staff report to the Plan Commission detailed the comprehensive plan goals and policies that would be positively addressed with the proposed amendment. Um, service business designation can provide a land use transition from industrial uses to the north, to commercial and, or commercial uses and residences to the south. The city can adequately serve this property with service business uses. Uh, service business uses include medical uses that are not allowed in industrial areas. For the proposed zoning map amendment, the commission made the findings as listed in draft ordinance 21-16. The property owner was notified of staff's intention to propose this rezoning, and the owner was again notified when the, when the hearing date was assigned. Uh, staff notified the owner again in the days before the Plan Commission hearing to remind him of the hearing and to, uh, inform him of the commission's action and the probable February 23rd date for consideration. And the staff notified, um, the owner immediately after the Plan Commission made its recommendation. Um, staff again informed the owner last week of tonight's meeting and provided information to the owner to register and participate in the meeting along with, uh, um, along with giving, uh, notifying him of the opportunity to attend in person. Staff has not received any communication from the owner regarding these, the land use and rezoning proposals. At the February 3rd commission meeting, commission remote meeting and hearing, the owner did not attend, nor did any citizens attend that meeting. The commission stated that the proposed land use and zoning designations are appropriate for the property, meeting some of the comprehensive plan goals and policies. By votes of six to zero, the commission recommended approval of an amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map to classify the subject property's service business and recommended approval to amend zoning map for the SB service business district.
Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Joel on this? Laura, do you see anybody in the audience, uh, or online that wants to speak at this, if the owner is online or in person?
No, none of the attendees have their hand up.
Anyone else have any further on this matter? Not hearing anything, I will recommend approval to City Council, ordinance 21-15 amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map to the service business land use classification. Second, Knopf. Motion by Callahan, second by Knopf. Roll call, please.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent, Euer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Thank you, Alan. Do you want me to just go ahead, since it's already been explained, uh, for item number seven? Just go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead and just take that as well.
Yep. I move we approve ordinance, uh, to, uh, move we approve to City Council ordinance 21-16 amendment to the official zoning map, 106 to 110 North Redant Road, City of Batavia applicant. Anybody have any? Anybody have any further? Motion by Callahan, second by Knopf. Roll call, please.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent, Euer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Baron? Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up is item number eight, which is ordinance 21-19 authorizing execution of a purch, of a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of real property comprised of 400 to 500 North Redant Road, Batavia, Illinois, and 901 Swanson Drive, Batavia, Illinois, identified by permanent index number Laura?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to make a correction that in one place, the permanent index number was not changed, and I can see that that is right in that title there. It should be 12-14-402-020, just taking the three out. Um, it is correct on the ordinance and the, and the memo. But, um, this is a, an ordinance to approve authorizing, uh, execution of a purchase and sale agreement um, for this property, which is located directly next door to the existing Public Works facility. Um, at the time that, uh, staff presented the 2021 budget to City Council, we could not have anticipated that the property next door to us, um, would be on the market as it was, uh, under contract at the time that we did the budget last year with another buyer. Um, however, uh, we have had several discussions with City Council about, um, the opportunity that this presents. Um, our Public Works Department is extremely cramped for space. Um, the, its existing building was, um, built in the 1980s, and, uh, as many know, the City of Batavia experienced a pretty explosive growth in the 1990s. Um, so what has happened over the course of that time is, uh, Public Works has had to kind of make, make do to put things where they, they fit, and we also moved the engineering department from City Hall to the Public Works, uh, building in the last 10 years as well, uh, which also made it close quarters and cramped quarters for working space, but we also are storing some equipment out of doors currently due to the lack of space that would have a longer life expectancy if it was able to be stored indoors. In addition to Public Works, um, we have the opportunity due to the size of the building to, uh, use it for a couple of other uses as well. One of those would be to provide space for some of our community organizations. Um, one of those is the Batavia food pantry and clothes closet. The city currently provides them with 5,000 square foot of space, which, uh, is inadequate for the demand that, uh, exists in the City of Batavia for their services. And so, uh, purchase of this building would offer us the opportunity to have that, um, vital community resource, um, have a home that would suit it for the next, um, long time. And then also we have the, uh, toy drive every year. This is a 73-year Batavia tradition of partnership that was, um, started between the Batavia Fire Department Rotary Club as well as, uh, local family, the Baileys, who have been carrying on the tradition ever since. Um, and, uh, unfortunately, it has no permanent home, and every year we have to try to find 10,000 square foot of empty space that a property owner is willing to give us for free for three months during the time that the toy drive has to set up its, um, its enterprise for distribution to needy families in our community. And, uh, we would really be, we would just feel great if we were able to solve the issue of them having to move space every time and, and be able to count on a space where they could do this toy distribution every year. But in addition to, uh, having space for community organizations, the building also has the, uh, opportunity for some revenue potential as well. Um, there is a space that is approximately 14,600 square feet at the, uh, south end of the building that is currently being, uh, leased for warehousing activities, and the city could continue to, um, lease that space to a private entity and utilize that as a revenue source, both to, um, offset the costs of servicing the debt, but also for, uh, future maintenance costs, because we do know that probably sometime in the next six to 10 years, at least a portion of the roof of this building will, uh, need to be replaced. And so, staff is recommending that the city purchase this building, and also, um, there will be money needed to make the improvements for the Public Works, the area that will be utilized by Public Works. Uh, the food pantry has indicated that if they take the center 20,000 square foot of space, that they would finance their own build out of, uh, that area. But, um, it would be recommended that the city would issue $5 million in general obligation bonds, and that would cover both the purchase and our build out. And so the result of that would be a, um, would, it would be paid for, the debt would be serviced by a property tax levy as the source of funding, and that would, uh, add to the tax bill of a home worth $300,000, approximately $24.40 for the next 20 years, um, to service that debt. So, in summary, staff is supporting the City Council authorizing the purchase and sale agreement that would allow us to acquire the real estate. One thing I would point out in the purchase and sale agreement is that the city has 70 days as a due diligence period. Um, we would be looking at all of the, uh, systems within the building, as well as the structure of the building. It'll allow us an opportunity to, um, look over any environmental testing that has been done within the buildings, and also, uh, that roof to get a better assessment of exactly what type of, uh, repair might be needed when. And, um, after that 70-day period, we also have then a 30-day period to close. And with that, um, I would ask if anybody has any questions for me? I think that we do have a number of attendees this evening who would also like to, um, perhaps speak.
Um, Gary, do you have anything that you wanted to add to that for the public works use of the building?
I don't have anything specific right now. Certainly, uh, people have questions, I can certainly answer questions.
Okay.
And Peggy, did you have anything that you wanted to add to what I presented?
Uh, no, I think you've covered it well.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody on the council have any questions? Okay, Alan. Mark, go ahead.
So Laura, I, today's discussion is really only revolving around the purchase of the building, but when do we have to work on the GO bonds? Because I'm just trying to understand why that number hasn't gone down since the purchase price of the building has gone down.
Peggy, can I get you to chime in on the timing of the GO bonds?
Yes, um, the last GO bond issue that we did, uh, last summer for the water utility took about 64 days from start to finish. So, uh, we would probably just need 70 days. So we will need to begin the process during the due diligence period.
It's our hope that, um, that a lot of documentation exists of, uh, recent reports due to the fact that the building was recently under contract, and it is our hope that we can get the lion's share of the due diligence work done in the first 30 days.
Sure, so I, but my question is that, uh, the $5 million that we originally talked about was for the purchase price and the build out. Purchase price is less than, um, originally anticipated is my understanding, or based on our previous conversation, so I don't know why the, the GO bond hasn't gone down, gone down accordingly, because that seems like now we just have extra money that we weren't... We, we haven't even talked about how much it's going to really cost to build it out, our estimate.
That's a great question, and part of the due diligence period will be, um, uh, will be better able to understand the exact um, amount that we'll need for the build out, so I would expect that the $5 million would be decreased. So, um...
How does that work with when we start the process for the GO bond? Do we have to start the process for the five, full $5 million, but we can change that later?
Peggy, could you...
I'll address that. This is Peggy. Um, so generally for a bond issue that size, the closing cost will be, uh, well over $100,000, and then the underwriters, uh, discount and other items, it would be about $200,000, and the way you can structure it is either you build those in so that you get $5 million back, or you can decrease the amount that you receive so that the, you have less cash. So we'll look at that once we know what the costs are and come back to the City Council at that time before we start the process.
Okay, thank you.
The other thought was too, if we went with a higher amount and it ended up being less, then we could use that funding for other capital projects, because we know that we have, I mean, the most extra it would be, would be 1 or 200,000. It wouldn't be a significant number, unless the estimate was way off for the building, and we could always set some funds aside too for future maintenance.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Alan?
Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, and that right there is part of my concern about what we're bonding out, because now we're talking about adding more things to $5 million instead of just a building now became available. It's, we're viewing this as $5 million became available. And how I would vote is different on the question, is it, shall the city bond $5 million to buy this and do other things? Well, I don't know what those other things are and whether they're necessary. If the, uh, question is, do we buy this building with a build out that has funding from the tax levy and funding from other, uh, sources, uh, other reserves that may decrease the, the total bond amount, my answer is different than just giving a, let's get an authorization for $5 million and buy the building and then blank check other things. I'm, I'm definitely a no on that.
So this, uh, particular ordinance is to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for purchasing the building for 3.55 million. It isn't the ordinance to establish the, uh, GO bond, just for clarification. And so if we do think that there is some modification to that $5 million number that needs to be made, um, that can be made at the time that, uh, we adopt the ordinance to, uh, issue the bonds.
Right, and that was why when Mark asked the question and that other things are being thrown in there potentially, that is, that does affect, we want to say yea or nay to what the purchase price of this is, because we're looking at a minimum right now of 3.55. Is that it, or is that potentially lower with other, uh, revenue sources out of reserves from either water or electrical that could be used? Because that, that for me starts to, as Joe has, uh, possibly stated, it's, it's not about the purchase, it's about the funding. And that's where I know myself and others have been concerned about funding for this, and the two go hand in hand. You can't say you want to buy something and figure it out later where you're going to pay for it.
No, that's, and that's why we proposed in the, um, memo that it be a bond issuance backed with, uh, levy, so that there was, that, that would be, you know, kind of, I guess the worst-case scenario to put it that way, but that would be a secure source of knowing that we would have the revenue to, um, pay the debt service. Um, certainly, we can identify other resources, um, and this can be done in any year to determine if we have other revenue sources that we wanted to apply, and for any given year, if we wanted to abate part of that levy that was put in place, um, to service the debt. So we can continue to do that on an ongoing basis.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Peggy, I'm just, would like to add that you can always only issue 4.8 million if that makes you feel more comfortable. What I meant is, we have other capital projects, if we made it a round bond issue, the money would be spent wisely. But certainly you can change it to 4.8, and that can be decided at a later date when we're ready to move forward should, uh, everything come through on the due diligence.
Yeah, because I would like to see if we're going to go out to bond, you know, bond out to do this, that we only go out for the money that we have to have for it. You know, I, I don't want, you know, to decide that, hey, we're, we're buying a new car, but we got a big enough loan, we can go out and buy something else for it. I mean, that's not what this is about. This is about an opportunity that's here, and, you know, if we're going to reach out and borrow money to do that, we should only borrow what we need to pay for this. So that's my feeling on it.
Yeah, and that was, and that was my point, was that we want to talk about the discussion tonight, make sure we separate the two.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Because I'm more comfortable with that as the purchase price than I wa, than I am with the $5 million trying to find out what that real number is going to be after we find out how much it's going to cost us to build out.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and again, we, we can always abate that back if we find out that, you know, we can get sidewalks done with other grant money or something else. We can, we can apply that later on, and that may happen over the time when we do that. Okay.
Alan, it's Joe.
Go ahead, Joe.
A building this size, what's the estimated cost to operate and maintain a building this size for a year? And have we thought about adding that into our annual budget and where that money is going to come from?
So that's typically part of the due diligence is to request copies of those expenses. And that is part of the purchase and sale agreement. So that will definitely be a consideration as we move through the due diligence period.
How much of this 24,000 square feet is going to be committed to equipment versus office space?
Gary, maybe you have a better eye for that. To me, it looks as it's built.
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. The office space, in the northernmost units, the office space is around 5,000 square feet. And the remainder of that is garage for operations. So for vehicles that are used day to day, for workers, squatting, do work, and also then for, you know, storage useings for equipment that we currently have stored outside. That warehouse space will also be used for the toy drive folks, other materials and equipment. So the breakdown in square footage wise, the office space is about 5,000 square feet. That's existing today. We're not doing anything new. And then the remainder of the square footage is warehouse.
Then what do we need a million dollars for build out? If there's already existing office space and the rest is a garage, how do we need a million dollars to build out a garage?
Well, and again, as Laura kind of started the conversation, we're going to look through 30 days of due diligence. We're going to look at condition of the roof, the condition of the HVAC system, the condition of the electrical system. We're going to look.
Abby?
I'm sorry. We're going to kind of dual from top to bottom, the condition of the building. For that, number one, we'll tell us, do we need to replace, you know, an HVAC unit? Should that be part of the negotiations, fix the failure? Now, those are the things we'll know right upfront. To answer your question about build out, we'll need to do, you know, new drop ceiling, new lighting, new carpeting, paint. The break room right now in that unit doesn't have any cabinets or sink or anything, so we need to do the break room. We need to do nothing both type things. Fiber optics, getting fiber over to the domain for communication. We need to close circuit TV cameras and alarm systems. Backup generator for power restoration or for power restoration being, you know, in case the power goes out. Laura mentioned earlier the sidewalk. We have to run the sidewalk from about 300 feet north of Wilson Street up to this building. So that's why we have right now the generic value of an extra $1 million to cover all those expenses. Correctional boring for the fiber. Again, anything that's going to be needed to bring the building up to suit what we need. If that is $800,000, if that's $500,000, if that's $750,000, gets $200,000. As we come to you tonight, we don't know those values, but we're working to get those values completed in the first 30 days so that we can then come back to you to start that bond process. So we just right now have kind of made a generic and a worst case, as Laura said, a worst case estimate, you know, another million dollars. And then that was kind of the ballpark that we've been working with. That allowed us to establish a generic bond amount. That allowed us to establish a generic impact to the homeowners, what it would be. And then we will work in the next 30 days to, obviously, refine that number to more, as Alderman Wolf said, to more of what it's going to, you know, cost based on all of our work that we do.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yeah, I just want to throw in, as we're talking about the money here, that I have been somewhat vocal in sharing, certainly with members of the council and the staff, that I'm of the opinion, we've got some things we, as a city, can sell that can help maybe bring down this cost a little bit. And specifically, we are the owners of a piece of property that's now currently under the control of the Batavia Water Department. It was originally bought for the Batavia Electric Department. And then their plans for it evaporated. And so then it was bought by the Water Department. And now things have happened in the Water Department that no longer necessitates their ownership of it. So I guess what I'm going to suggest is, is that we own this piece of property. It's on West Main Street. It's on the north side of the street as you start to go up the hill toward Winmouth Road. And it is a big enough piece of land that we, I've had it, our community development department looked at it and measured it all out, that we can probably fit 11 R0 residential lots on the property. And then there's also room for a pretty good sized retention pond because it goes down the hill toward Mill Creek Watershed. It would be right across, almost right across the street from McQuain School. And it is a real nearby city water and sewer and electric. I think maybe the sewer would be the biggest challenge there, but the water and electric are pretty close by. And so I think we could get a fairly decent price if we put that up to bid for home builders to buy it and put in a nice little R0 subdivision of minimum of 14,000 square foot lots. So I'm anticipating if we get 11 lots out of it, that we will get some serious money for that piece of property. And I would suggest that we maybe make the Water Department whole, whatever investment they've got in it. But then the rest of the money would be put into the fund to help pay for some of the enhancements here. So along those same lines, going back down Main Street, you get to the Tower Car Wash. And immediately behind the Tower Car Wash is a vacant piece of property that's owned by the City of Batavia. And I, you know, we haven't actively marketed it in any great degree. It's own commercial. And I would suggest that we should probably begin marketing that and see what we could get for it. And then, of course, the other factor that comes in here is, is that we are proposing that a third of this building is going to be placed up for rental, and it's already rented. But that could be another source of some degree of that rent could be applied toward the debt to help pay that down on an annual basis. So I'm just suggesting here that, you know, we don't know the answers to all this yet, but there are some resources that the city has that, quite frankly, specifically that 11 acres, 11 lot subdivision on West Main Street could certainly be something that could add to the cash rolls of the school district and the city and the park district and everybody else. And I think, you know, kind of resembling the homes that are right across the street in Tanglewood and the size and the value of those, that could be a very nice little subdivision sitting up there on the top of the hill. So I'm thinking that would be an easy sell for the right developer to put themselves into that deal and get something going. And I have been told in the real estate world, of which you know I work, that there are a lot of people nosing around trying to find quote unquote lots to build on in Batavia of various sizes. So I don't think it's going to be a hard sell if we put it up. And I've already got the staff kind of looking at some of the details of potentially getting, you know, getting kind of a plan out there, getting it on the market and seeing where we can go with this.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on this?
Alderman Miller here.
Go ahead, Ken.
I have still unclear if we are, if our intent in purchasing this building is in the long run consolidating where we have equipment and public works things into this building and then like maybe trying to sell off those other places. Like, are we trying to do something like that?
Well, I believe we're going to vacate the tin shed down here or the.
Or the three bay garage.
Three bay garage down there, we'll be vacating that.
Yes.
And then the same with what we've got stored over at the water transfer.
The South Shumway?
The South Shumway.
So the tin shed certainly will go away one day. We all know that the tin shed is going to be redeveloped, hopefully as part of the Carson Becker property over there. So that property will be sold off one day, at least that's the hope. The Shumway Busch Station is not going to get sold off, to directly answer your question. But we are looking to consolidate the storage out of the Shumway Busch Station. We also have storage in our substations. Obviously, those areas, those are not going to get sold off. So we're not going to divest the many of those. We're just, we are looking to bring consolidated storage and again, a lot of equipment which I take right at Public Works itself that we'd be looking to get under roof. So hopefully that answers the question.
Yes, thank you, Gary.
Okay, anybody else? Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak that's got the hand up, Laura?
Yes, Sylvia Kepel has her hand up, and I have activated your microphone.
Hi there. First of all, it's not just Sylvia Kepel. I'm here at the polling place at Messenger Library, closing down the polls for today's Aurora primary. So there are four Batavia residents who are here and have something to say. First of all, here's Mary Nique.
I just simply wanted to say, I think these decisions to spend more money should be tabled until such a time as we are able to get through COVID. I know several families in Batavia who are extremely strapped right now. And I think any more money expenditures is just too much in what we've experienced such 2020. I think we should table it till 2022. But I like the idea of at least being able to consider other properties that can help to defray the cost as opposed to constantly putting the cost back on the taxpayers. Hold on, that was Mary Nique. Hey, Rick, you want something to say?
No, that's good.
Okay.
Hi, this is Vic Deeks. I'm concerned about the difference between donating the use of a building that we already own and having zero, very little cost to the city as compared to buying commercial real estate at market rate and paying for it with borrowed money for the purpose to give it away. It's a noble ambition. I just don't think it's feasible financially. So I admit it's a close call, but I would weigh on the side of no. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ken, this is Sylvia Kepel here. I've sent questions before about the money that is going to be from the rental property. I ran some numbers for you on what it would, looks like it would cost for the bond issue versus what the rent will bring in. And it came out to a benefit of just $5,400 for a, for a commercial property, from a commercial property to go toward maintenance. Now, if you're talking roofs, the school district, Batavia School District has in their future plan, they have replacement of a roof of 43,000 square feet for $1 million. This, we're talking about 59,000 square feet. So we're looking very likely at over $1 million. And for a property, a commercial property, to be renting out a quarter of the space, giving $5,000 a year toward the maintenance, toward over a million dollar roof, that's peanuts. And I really object to my tax dollars being used to subsidize private industry. Now, I would like to see if they could toe their weight, perhaps with a higher rent, if the city departments could figure out what percentage they use the property and devote some of their budget toward paying for that space. And if the charity that supposedly were, said they knew for 10 years that they would need larger space, the question is, why weren't they doing fundraising over these last 10 years? And if they had been doing fundraising, they could have possibly had a lot more to contribute to some space. So as much as I like charities, I like the food pantry and the clothes closet. I know I told you before that I'm not, I don't like picking and choosing favorite charities over the expense of others. So the only way I could see it is if the commercial property toe its own weight. If the city departments split the cost and if the charity contributed something to its yearly, the yearly cost to greatly reduce the cost to taxpayers. That's the only way I would think that it would be fair to us taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, Laura?
I just would like to refute the $5,400 figure that was presented. It is up to the city to decide what to do with the revenue that it collects from the private tenant and how much to allocate toward maintenance, how much to allocate toward service of the debt. Or it is purely revenue. They can allocate it any way they wish.
Yeah, and I think that any of our city buildings that we have, especially like Public Works, each one of the utilities does contribute to the maintenance of that building, the operations of that building. So whoever has space in the new building would contribute towards the maintenance of it and, you know, the upkeep of the building and the renovations to the building. So, you know, I read through that memo that you, or the email that you shared with us from Sylvia and the numbers there. And again, we have to make the decision, do we want to take every dime that comes out of that rent that we charge the leasing in that property and put that towards maintenance? Or do we want to use some of that towards debt service? How do we want to handle that money that comes in? So that's something that we, as a council, still have to decide. Since we're not really in the business of property ownership, this is something new for us. So we do have to make that decision and weigh, you know, in my mind, I kind of want to see it all go towards maintenance so that it's there, that we have it for maintenance. As far as the debt service, whether we get it out of property that the residents have already bought with their tax money and when we sell that, or whether we do it out of a bond referendum and take it out of future tax dollars, it still comes out of the taxpayers' pockets. You know, so, you know, we talk about that all the time, that we get grant money. Well, grant money is still tax money from everybody, not just from us. So whether we use property we already own or whether we use borrowed money and pay it off with taxes in the future, it's still tax money that's being spent on this building. So that's the reality of it. It's just where it's coming, where the tax money's coming from. You know, it's money we already have or money we're going to have. Is there anybody else that wants to speak tonight?
Is there anyone else, if you want to put your hand up to speak? Sylvia, your hand is still up. I think she does want to. Okay, you're just telling me to.
Okay, so what you're saying is, you wouldn't, you might not even consider using the $85,000 to paying off the debt service so that, so taxpayers would directly be paying for all of the, and subsidizing all of the loan that the private business gets?
No, we're saying that it's up to the city to determine how they will use the revenue and what will be the split. It doesn't, it's not necessary that it's 25%. It could be 85%. It could be 2%. But it's just a matter for the city to determine how they would use the funds they collect as revenue.
Okay, I just want to make this clear. So you are telling me, what I'm hearing you say, is you are not willing, or you are expecting the taxpayer to be subsidizing private business?
No, we would be renting the property out, just like any other landlord.
Okay, but the taxpayer, but I am paying for that property. I am paying my 24/40 a year for that property. And paying a quarter of that money is going toward that property. And so you're taking my money so that you could rent it out to the, so it could be used by a private business?
No, actually, the revenue that's collected would not be paid to a private business. The money that the city collects as revenue would be spent on city expenses that are for the benefit.
But why am I paying, why am I paying for that 14,000 square feet?
So that it can generate revenue to offset the costs of maintenance of the building and other general fund obligations of the city that benefit residents.
But you're not, you're not giving me my money back if you're not, if you're putting that into, what you're talking about is putting it back into the building, not to generate revenue that could benefit the rest of the residents. You're talking about maintenance, which puts it back into that building, which benefits only that building. And so I am paying for that property, that property that is going toward the use of a private business. I would like the private business to stand on its own and not take my money for their property.
Great, thanks.
They're leasing the property. You know, I mean, it's a lease situation. So there, if we decide that we want to take 50% of that money and put it towards maintenance, it's not going to be maintenance on only that section of the building. It's going to be maintenance on the overall building, what the city uses and what we lease out. So I don't know how else to explain it.
There are no other hands raised by members of the public.
Does anybody on the council have anything else to say?
Alan?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just along the lines of what was just being said about the $85,000. I know it's listed as a potential revenue source, but in many ways, this is a reallocation of the already existing $85,000 in taxes that were being collected. It's just that that $85,000 was originally going to all of the taxing bodies, the school being the primary recipient of it. And the city is reallocating that 85,000 to, to the city's uses for it. So as far as that, as a resident, that may not be an entire benefit to all of the taxing bodies. It may be a potential benefit to the city because the city now gets $85,000. But residents are still out that $85,000 that would be going to the other taxing bodies.
Alan, it's Joe.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, a couple of the questions and answers that I heard yet tonight, there's still to me, in my mind, a lot of unknowns, a lot of things we don't know. We don't know what it's going to cost. We don't know what this is going to be. We don't know what that's going to be. I can't see putting taxpayers of the city on the hook for a dime when we don't know so many things about all this. And that gets back to, we found a solution and we had to hurry up and go find the problem and rush through this and try and get this done as fast as we can. And when you try and rush things through as fast as you can, things get missed. I'm against this.
So that is one of the reasons, given the complexities here, that we asked for a longer than ordinary due diligence period, even though we know that the property was recently under contract and that certain reports already exist that we have, will have the opportunity to review and update if we so wish. So it isn't that we are writing a check for 3.55 million tonight. The, the proposal is to enter into the purchase and sale agreement that give us a 70-day due diligence period followed by 30 additional days to close.
Dan?
Just to placate some people out there that are not comfortable with this project, can you give an example of something you could uncover during the due diligence process that would change your mind on purchasing a property like this? Just anything.
Uh, there's a mold situation inside the building.
So you wouldn't move forward with this purchase?
You couldn't work in there and that expense is going to cost $500,000 to abate.
Seems pretty responsible to me, so I would like you to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Alan, this is Elliot.
Go ahead, Elliot.
Yeah, I guess I would just kind of ask everyone to kind of rewind the clock a few months where we were already in budget discussions and we were looking at, you know, some significant costs coming our way, capital improvement projects that we still have yet to identify a funding source to. And, and obviously the, the discussion at hand was, you know, is that going to require a tax increase in the future years to come? Now we're looking at this expenditure here unplanned, impromptu, I get it. It's going to serve a need, it's going to serve a future need. But that's no small obligation, there are $5 million bonds. So I'm against this simply because the math does not add up for me. And I encourage everybody else to think about the years to come, the tax increases, that it's going to be a struggle with the council trying to find ways to not throw everything on the backs of the residents.
Hey, anybody else? Move forward here. Okay, hearing nothing, I will make motion to recommend the Council Ordinance 21-19, authorizing execution of purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of real property comprised of 400 to 500 North Redant Road and 901 Swanson Drive, Batavia, Illinois, identified by permanent index number 12-14-402-020.
Second. McFadden.
Motion by Wolf, second by McFadden. Roll call, please.
Alan.
Marty, go ahead.
Yeah, I just thought of just one thing that, for why I'm going to vote no, is because the, the issues of how we're financing it and how much is going to be paid out of here and out of there would affect how I would vote for this. And since I don't know these things, if we're talking of a 70-day plus window, I'm gone. The, the election and all of that is already. So I can't handcuff my successor with committing to a source for a purchase that I'm not going to be here to help figure out a way to pay for it. So I'm a no.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley absent. You are?
Aye.
Serone absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Prissato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knob?
No.
Chanzet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried eight to four.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next is item number nine, which is 21-19-R, authorizing execution of task order number two for Phase Two Design Engineering Services from Mahoney Creek Tributary Detention Basin with HR Green in the amount not to exceed $84,300. Okay, this one is mine. Do, are you going to take this one tonight, Gary? Do you have the info on this? Or is Andrea here?
I can give a brief introduction. I can give a brief introduction. Andrea's on the line as well, so if there's the more detailed questions, she could certainly jump in and answer them if she needs to. But very briefly, this is for final engineering for a drainage study and design of storm water management facility at the, essentially the upstream end of the Mahoney Creek Tributary. This is a tributary that experienced a flash flooding during a significant storm event and was identified during the 2015 storm as being one of our priority areas. Andrea prepared a request.
Uh-oh.
We lost your mic, Gary.
Gary, we lost your sound. So we may need Andrea to jump in if you're there, Andrea.
Gary?
I don't think he can.
I don't think he can hear us.
No.
Uh-oh.
I'll text him.
Okay, hello.
Hi, Andrea, thank you.
I just text Gary as well. He's still talking. I might need to hide his video. But as Gary was saying, that this is the upstream end of the Mahoney Creek Tributary. So it's at the end of Winter Green Terrace, at the low point of Kirk Road in between Wilson and Heim. And it does get that flash flood volume and it has had some erosion. And back in 2018, we had hired WVK to do the preliminary investigation. And at that time, we did not have ownership of the detention parcel and the big Lot Five parcel of Rose Hollow subdivision. But we were able to obtain that through tax sale in hopes of doing an improvement to this area. We currently have an easement on the Fermi Lab property on the east side of Kirk Road that is utilized for detention. But unfortunately, it doesn't collect all the runoff from the road. Only a part of the storm sewer system diverts over on that side. So this project, as Gary said, I had sent out a request for proposal. Probably one of the most difficult decisions. They were all very well-written. Excellent staffing. Some of it came down to the cost. But again, they were, it was all wonderful proposals. They gave us some excellent ideas to look at as well. But we're looking at putting in a detention basin on the west side of Kirk Road, just to the east of the end of those homes over there in that sub, in that Lot Five. And looking at different options as our Phase One study. We know some of the costs involved with it. But now that we actually own this property, I'm looking at putting the wall over, a weir wall to control the flow that is headed downward towards the rest of the city and the residents. And looking at potential walls for noise because we may have to eliminate some of the trees that are currently out there. And then just seeing how much volume we can actually store and looking at different storm events to hold some of that. And also, there's potential for doing some improvements on the detention basin on the east side of Kirk Road as well. There'll be coordination with KDOT as well as Fermi on this project. And the most qualified consultant and the best cost, I guess you would say, both happen to be HR Green. They are the consulting firm that did the Mahoney Creek Watershed Study, if you remember from last year. So they're familiar with this area as well. They did note, this is one of the projects in the many that they provided for us in that study. So staff is very comfortable with their firm and feel comfortable moving forward with them for the success of coming up with the design to help alleviate this runoff and slow it down upstream. So it will help the erosion and a bunch of the other items that were brought up when we had Mahoney Creek Watershed Study brought last fall. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions?
Does anybody have any questions on this? I know this is just another step in our trying to solve a lot of the issues that we have over there.
So Alan, I have a couple of things, please.
Go ahead.
So Andrea, the, in your memo, you were saying that some of the detaining of the runoff volume has yet to be determined. And in the memo from HR Green, they're talking about yet to be determined runoff employing either a 10-year to 100-year storm occurrence. I, you know, I just would, you know, I've had this conversation with you and with Gary many times. We've talked about the flooding, you and I, in this area and Gary and I many times also with this tributary. I, I hope we're pushing more towards 100-year than a 10-year. I mean, the 10-year is what, a 1986 engineer's record? You know, we, we do have, again, we're in the throes of climate change as, look at Texas. Look at anything that's going on around the world. And look at the rain events we have every year. And it's coming at us this spring. We're going to have a, a very difficult spring, I'm envisioning.
Don't say that.
Well, I, it's just the truth. But I'm just want staff to kind of push more towards the 100-year flood event than the 10-year. But this is, I'm, I'm very happy that we're doing this. This is, it's late today, but it's, it's getting done. Gary and I had had this conversation five years ago about the issues going on here. And then he, he told me, we're working towards it and it's, it's, it's finally getting into some stage of development. So I much appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, and Mike, so right now, what they usually say is like the two-hour 24, two-year 24-hour event is kind of the first flush of the storm. So that's why, with that being said, we want to see some of the options are being able to construct a berm and keep the haul off reduced. And so looking at that and how much volume we can actually store, water quality and stuff like that. So, you know, it, we may not have to go all the way to the 100-year or the 100-year may just cost so much more. So it is something we're definitely looking at and that's why we didn't nail it down into a certain storm event at this moment. And we're going to have a meeting at like a 50% to kind of see what they've come up with and what direction the city would want to go with just a preliminary estimates of where they're at.
Right, and I understand that. I mean, 100 years is going to be a lot more than cost. It'll cost a lot more than a 10-year, absolutely. And Gary and I also spoke a few years back about a possible restrictor, if, if that's something that's still in, in the works, you know, maybe not in the design. I don't know, but it generally helps sometimes, so.
That's going to be.
Again, I do appreciate that.
Yeah, there's an existing restrictor on the east side and that's what we're looking at, putting on the west side, the weir structure, which may have, like a restrictor at the bottom and then overtapping a weir to allow the other volume. Those are options that we're looking at, how to best design that.
Right, well, that HR Green does a nice job, so I'm sure their design will come and, and accommodate the folks along that. Because that, that tributary goes all the way down. It just winds its way around and, you know, there's just a great deal of flooding that goes on all through the, the first wall along that tributary. So it'd be good to address, thank you.
Mike, can I jump in?
You're back, Gary.
Yes, Gary.
Welcome back.
It's really too bad because I made, I made the, I made the best speech of the, of the night tonight and now no one's about to hear it, so.
We could tell.
Alderman O'Brien, to answer your question, we, we have a finite area of land there and our goal may be to attenuate the peak flow within that tributary as best we can. So that, that is our goal, is to, is to attenuate the peak. In other words, try and, try and reduce the flash flooding within that tributary to the maximum extent possible. That, that is what we will do. Now, whether that ultimately equates to the 10-year storm or the 30-year storm or the 100-year storm, whatever we can do with the property that we own and with the property on the east side of Kirk Road, that's what our intention is to do. And unfortunately, we can't, you know, we can't create new property. We only have that finite, finite amount of property. And so we'll maximize that property as much as we can to attenuate the peak as much as we can.
Hey Gary, where is that property located?
Oh, the city owns the parcels immediately west of Kirk Road in the wooded area there, essentially. And then we have the easement on Fermi's property on the east side of Kirk Road.
Okay, and then the property in the wooded side on the west side? What road is it, is it, how, how big is that property?
How far south does it go, Andrea?
It, Mike, it's the, it's Lot Five out of that Rose Hollow. So it back, the north end of it is just off the, the Southern House on Blue Bell. And then it goes to about the backyard or a little bit beyond. I'll have to look at the GIS map. Of the house is on the south side of Winter Green. So we're also playing with grade as well. That's another factor that we have to look into in determining the volume that we can get.
Okay. Now, Gary, I understand what, what your, your constraints are. Absolutely, I, I do understand that. And I have every confidence, you know, from our conversations, that, you know, you know, maximize the effectiveness as, as you can. Thank you.
And Mike, I'm just, I was able to pull up GIS. I'll correct myself. The parcel goes all the way up to Goldenrod. It's a thin piece and it expands as it goes further south.
Okay.
Or further north, I mean, sorry.
Further north, right. All right, thank you, Andrea.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Just have a question. And I don't know, I mean, it's not really having to do with the city part of it, but I know part of that study also included along the lines going to the Park District. Have they been addressed, have they been approached by this? And is this something that they're really taking a look at and addressing? Because I, I think just along the whole lines, even though we're doing our part up at the end, I think this is something that needs to be addressed all the way along to really handle the situation. I think they have a key part because then the rest of it, from my understanding, is really on the citizens.
Right, and I'll have Gary chime in here, but the Park District has been a good partner in this and did some significant work along Mahoney Creek. Was it last year, Gary?
It did last year and, and Alderman Baron's correct. There were six key projects identified out of HR Green's study last year. And all those key projects, several of them fall on Park District. And all those key projects, several of them fall on Park District property. So none of those six projects are things that have been forgotten about. So they're all gonna go forward eventually, it's funding for me. This is just a kind of a separate project even from those six in that this is a project that the city identified back in 2015 due to the really fairly extreme funding that occurred along the tributary. And so that's why we're kind of jumping on this one and making it a priority from the city's perspective. But that's not to say that the other projects that will involve the Park District are being ignored. At some point in the future, they're gonna have to be tackled too.
And Jennifer, I know one of the big projects is Michael Wild Park. And I've had conversations with the Park District and they are on board for making the improvements needed to help those on Miller Court and that back up to Winter Green Terrace. It's currently piped and there's, you know, in the grand scheme of things, plans to naturalize that property as well to give it the capacity that's needed so it doesn't overtap and erode the backyards over there, for example.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions on this one? And I'll make the motion that we recommend to Council Resolution 21-19-R, authorizing execution of Task Order Number Two for Phase Two Design Engineering Services for Mahoney Creek Tributary Detention Basin with HR Green in the amount not to exceed $84,300.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Wolf, second by both of the first Ward Aldermen. We'll give it to Jen. Since Jen's in the room, sorry, sorry, Mike. She gets it.
That's fine. She deserves it.
Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knob?
Aye.
Chantz?
Aye.
And Barron?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next three resolutions all have to do with the MFT expenditures. First one here is Resolution 21-20-R, authorizing rescind of the MFT fund expenditure for 2020 resurfacing program in the amount of $1,475,000. Is Peggy still here to help us navigate through these?
Yes, Peggy is here and Gary. Peggy, would you like to take this one?
Okay.
You got it, Gary?
Thanks, Gary.
Cool.
Okay, sorry.
So the city received a grant from IDOT of seven and a half million back in 2014. And since that time, it's a reimbursable grant, so as we spend money on projects, the money comes back from IDOT. Since that time, we've used it for the railroad program as well as other capital projects. And we've reached the end now where that grant needs to be closed out and we need to get the final money from IDOT. But IDOT has said, because the last project that we coupled together was the Main Street project, but IDOT had told us that the Main Street project, they won't give us the money until the Main Street project is closed. Unfortunately, past history tells us that the Main Street project probably won't be closed for two or three years yet. So because we have the ability to, we're going to kind of uncouple this grant from the Main Street project and instead redirect it towards the MFT project or the, I'm sorry, resurfacing project from 2020, which that project will be closed very quickly and therefore we should be able to get the remainder of the grant from. So in order to do this, we need three separate resolutions. And Rahat summarized these in his memo, but basically the first resolution, 21-20, rescinds the original approval of MFT funding for the 2020 resurfacing program. 2021 allocates capital fund, in other words, city funds for the resurfacing program. And then now we're going to reallocate that MFT money over to Main Street. So we're basically swapping funds is what these will do. In the end, the net result is we'll be able to get the remainder of that grant from IDOT quicker.
And make sure that we get it this year before the.
And make sure that we get it this year and that the clock doesn't run out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so the clock doesn't run out on that, we don't lose the ability to get that money. I know somebody could do a better job explaining it than I could, so that's why I asked.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Okay, with that, does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, this is Joe. I love the creativity on coming up with alternate ways of keeping projects funded. I wish we could apply them to more than just street resurfacing projects, though.
That credit goes to Peggy and Rahat. They're the two that came up with this plan.
That's why we have the best crew to be able to do this, so that way we don't lose out on funding sources like that. Okay, I will make the motion that we recommend to Council Resolution 21-20-R, authorizing rescind of the MFT fund expenditure for 2020 resurfacing program in the amount of $1,475,000.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Ewer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serone, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knob?
Aye.
Chantz?
Aye.
And Barron?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next is Resolution 21-21-R, authorizing use of local fund for 2020 resurfacing program in the amount of $1,448,947.1.
Second.
That is a motion. A motion by Wolf, second by Ewer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knob?
Aye.
Chantz?
Aye.
And Barron?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. And then I'll make the motion that we recommend to Council Resolution 21-22-R, authorizing BLR 14220 to allocate $1,450,000 Motor Fuel Fund towards Main Street Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Ewer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knob?
Aye.
Chantz?
Aye.
And Barron?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. Up next is item number 13, Ordinance 21-20, commending wage and salary, or 21, 2021 Wage and Salary Ordinance. And I see we have Wendy. Hi Wendy, you're up.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
All right, so back when the ordinance for 2021 was approved, the budget wasn't completely formally approved. And you may recall, the economic development measure was approved for the 2021 budget. So the amendments to the Wage and Salary Ordinance is adding that position into the Wage and Salary Ordinance into Pay Grade 19 based on comparables and internal equity. And then additionally, since we were doing this amendment, there's some small housekeeping items that needed to be changed. One of the things actually was a clerical error on my part. Somehow in the process, back in 2020, the manager of electric operations was moved to a pay grade 21 and for some reason that wasn't changed appropriately in the new ordinance. And then just some small updates for the, a few of our engineer positions to more accurately reflect the duties that they have. And then the last thing is in the actual additional information. Currently, our water plant is a certification level B plant. Up until now, we've actually paid our water and sewer utility maintenance workers for an A, B, and C license. And what we are proposing, based on the recommendations from Gary and the superintendent, is that effective for this year, anyone we hire going forward, that we would only hire them for levels B and C. There would never be a use while it's great that it's attained an A, but there really is use based on our current end level. So these would just be the amendments to the Wage and Salary Ordinance. If anyone has any questions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on any of these? This is your item. Okay, then I will make the motion that we send the City Council, Ordinance 21-20, amending the 2021 Wage and Salary Ordinance.
Second, Barron.
Motion by Wolf, second by Barron. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knob?
Aye.
Chantz?
Aye.
And Barron?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. Up next is item 14, which is Resolution 21-24-R, IPBC Removal of Subpool and Becoming an Individual Entity. Alderman, Chantz?
I'm gonna turn this over to Wendy if she's here. This is a change in classification for how we identify ourselves as part of participating in the pool. My understanding from reading the memo that our participation has been great. However, in reviewing some of the formulas, it looks like there could actually be some more cost savings if we reclassify how we identify ourselves within the organization. Is that the best way to put it?
Absolutely, perfect. Yeah, so IPBC overall has, as you may recall, we joined back in 2016. And while we're still self-funded, it provides a really nice financial stability vehicle for us in regards to our health insurance, and it's proved to be very beneficial over the years. And so IPBC, though, in as they're growing, membership have broadened, I guess you'd say, some areas of opportunity with their formula and how they do the funding process. And so they reviewed that and in January, IPBC as a whole approved changing funding methodology and it's based solely on the size and based on our size, we are moved into what's considered a tier-three entity. And our funding is established where there still is risk pooling in that tier. And so outside of, in the past, we were a part of the subpool to help with our financial funding. And being a part of the subpool does not apply to the financial funding piece anymore. So we would be leaving the subpool and being our own individual member, which allows us full voting rights within the IPBC.
Now, I guess my only question is, last.
Sorry, this is effective July 1st.
Last year, the library joined our pool. That did affect our numbers and probably helped necessitate this reclassification then, right? Or is it too soon for that data?
Actually, it's too soon. They just became effective January 1st. So, so yeah. So I can just share, just if anyone wishes to know a little bit of our background of the benefits of IPBC. We joined in 2016 and in 2017, our performance was about 20% actually below the subpool itself. So we've had very positive performance overall from our claims dollars. And then in 2018, it was about 15% below. And then in 2019, it was about 15 as well. And probably the biggest savings that we've seen through the IPBC is how they blend the claims dollars and then they have what's called a bandit layer, which is large claims dollars and that's shared among the pool. That is really definitely given us a good financial vehicle overall for years. This new funding level as well will give us, we'll be able to see its base more so on our claims dollars, which hopefully will in turn show us some even higher cost savings.
Great, does anybody else have any questions? If not, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-24-R for removal from the subpool and becoming an individual entity within the organization.
Second, Rosado.
Motion is second. Any additional discussion? Our clerk roll call, please.
Chantz?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone? Absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knob?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next five, I think, here are tax abatements. I'll start off with number 15, which is Resolution 21-14-R. Dan?
Yeah, so looking at all these, we have five different tax levy resolutions to abate when the city chooses to pay from other sources, basically. So it's about $400,000 for the first one, $1.5 million for the electric refunding, another $400,000 for general fund from drainage projects. Fire station is almost a million and then water main replacement, $300,000. For a total of $3.2 million that we are abating and not putting on the tax rolls because we're using these alternative revenue sources. Did I leave anything? If not, I guess, is there any additional discussion? Otherwise, I would make a motion for Resolution 21-14-R for the 2020 tax levy abatements as related to IEPA refunding.
I have one question, Dan. Being new and kind of to this, I kind of took a look at what was in our budgeted books and I found two of them where the amounts were different. Is that just because?
How different?
Well, one, so the first one, which is 21-014R, that one was for $396,598. But in the budget book, it was $400,148.
I didn't catch that.
And then for 21-16R, this one was off by, it looks like a dollar. So it was $411.56 in the ordinance or the resolution. And then the budget is $411.57.
I didn't catch that. I'm assuming that either it's a typo or numbers didn't quite carry through, whatever the final numbers were after the levy, and then we can defer to staff on that before it comes to us.
This is Peggy. For the one with cents, the budget, we round up or down because we only budget and hold numbers. And the other one, there must have been a miscalculation in the amount of the interest. But. But I have verified that all of these match the levy amount that the county is planning. So these resolutions will abate that.
All right, that, that helps. I mean, just knowing that, you know, as far as the interest, the interest was off. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Dan, this is Joe, I had another question as well.
Yeah, what's up?
Yeah, when we talk about a, a tax levy abatement, are we saying that the, the money that comes in from the tax levy won't be used to pay these, that we have an alternate source of funding and we still collect that tax levy?
Right.
Or does the tax, tax levy reduced? Which I don't think that's the case. I don't think that means the tax rate goes down. I think it means we're using that tax money for something else.
Yeah.
No, what, what it means is we will not levy. Or the, when you issue a general obligation bond, it creates a bond ordinance that's filed with the county at the time of issuance that instructs the county to levy that tax each year. And that's what gives the investors confidence that no matter what, they're going to get their money. It's, it's a very good sound investment for them. But then we have the option to say, you know what, we have other sources of money. We're not going to, to impose that tax this year. And that was the intent, especially for the ones that are for the utilities. We issued a general obligation bond so that the utility would pay less in interest because it, it is the lowest interest rate that you can issue debt at. But we will not collect that money. And that was planned for in the budget.
Okay, did, did we collect that money in prior years?
No.
Okay.
We have, we have not collected the money in any year for any of these bond issues.
Through tax levies. Okay.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
And would this be something similar, Peggy, that we could do if, say, we sold property to pay for the building that we're talking about buying? Would this be how we would do that?
Yes, you can always, you can always abate taxes in any year. You can do it one year, two years, any, any amount that you choose.
So if you have a source where you could pay for it, then you could do that, that year and abate that taxes.
Yes.
People wouldn't be charged for that. Okay.
That's correct.
So if, if we pledged the rent as the revenue source, for example, for the, for the bonds, we could abate it if we collected enough money from, if we collected more money from the rent than we did from what the bond issue was.
Yes, yes, you could.
And then also to note, we've refinanced some of these bonds over time, as it is of, of these five different issues. And the most recently ones reissued back in 2020, we got a really fantastic deal on those as well, too.
Yes, our fire station bonds were refunded twice.
Any additional discussion? I'll call the roll on 14, please.
I don't have a second.
I'm sorry, I thought there was a second.
Second, Baron. Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron? Aye.
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent, Ewer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knob?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
Alderman Miller, your house sounds a lot more fun than our meeting room down here. Then on-
It's a circus.
On 21-15, that is for the electric refunding, roughly 1.5 million, make a motion.
Second.
Motion of second, any additional discussion? Our clerk call the roll, please.
Was that Baron, Wolf that made the motion?
Yeah, give it to Wolf.
Okay, thank you. Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent, Ewer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knob?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
Then on 21 dash 16, that is on drainage in lieu of the general fund, I'd make a motion.
Second.
Motion of second, any additional discussion? Our clerk call the roll, please.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent, Ewer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knob?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
Then on 21 dash 17 dash R, this is for the fire station refunding in the amount of roughly 700,000, I'd make a motion.
Second.
Motion of second, any additional discussion? Our clerk call the roll, please.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent, Ewer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knob?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
Then the last one, 21 dash 18 dash R, this is for the water main replacement in the amount of about 259,000, I would make a motion.
Second.
Motion of second, any additional discussion? Our clerk call the roll, please.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent, Ewer?
Aye.
Serone absent, McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knob?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
Thank you. And I recall, we cannot put these on, on consent. We have to vote these on regular agenda. Thank you.
Okay, now to move on to something totally different. A discussion on painting of utility boxes. I know this came out of former discussions about the, the, the big utility box over by the-
Boardwalk shops? Yes.
You want to go ahead, Laura?
Um, actually, if Gary wouldn't mind presenting, he-
Okay, Gary, go ahead.
Prepared the memo.
I did, thank you. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, go ahead. So for, for many years, the electric utility has gotten repeated requests to paint our utility boxes with decorative murals. As I indicated in the memo, this is not a matter of code, but rather a matter of policy. And it's always been the city's policy to not paint the boxes. As I explained in my memo, we really strive to make a distinction between, you know, a place where a child should be playing and a child should not be playing. And, you know, whether they're, whether, well, well, they are not the most aesthetically pleasing having consistent colored green boxes throughout town does allow parents to tell their children, you know, those are not things to play on. And if a child, we've always said that if a child sees one that is suddenly, you know, colored like a rainbow, that's going to be a lot more appealing to that child to go and run and jump on and play around. That's why we've always been against the concept. But ultimately, it is a matter of policy, not of code. So if this council determines that they want to change policy and allow decorative painting of the electrical distribution boxes, that is, that is council's prerogative to do that. I did want to clarify, I know it's been mentioned that other communities are doing this. Aurora being one that's literally right next door to us. And again, Aurora's program is for traffic signal control boxes. Aurora does not have a municipal electric utility. And they are not contemplating painting electric utility boxes, simply their traffic control box. So if I don't really have much more than that, I certainly will be able to answer any questions that might come up. Alan?
Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, I know Jamie had kind of brought this up the other day. And I know that, you know, I said we'd probably talk about it at a later date. I didn't think we were going to be talking about it this soon, just because I wanted to do a little more research on it. I know Aurora has the policies in place, Elgin has the policies in place, as do, kind of as was stated, a lot of municipalities around the United States have been doing this with, you know, maybe not paint, but have also done wraps, vinyl wraps and so on, so forth. So I wanted to get a grasp of what was going on in other communities before we had brought this, but it kind of came on. And as was mentioned about it, you know, the, the concerns about, as was stated, the kids climbing on it. I know that has been mentioned before, but I have, I have not heard any situation where that has actually occurred, nor how it was addressed in other communities. And I know the one box that initially got this started was the one at the boardwalk shops. And, you know, kind of putting the, in the memo, how it stated the voltage that was on there. And I got thinking, well, maybe we ought to discuss this at a later time after we've, you know, looked at others. But then I kind of decided to leave it on because that voltage that we're talking about, if that is of such a high voltage that the public would then need to be protected from, because I don't think there's a higher increase for electrical currents to, to occur painted or not. And we did put the, the boardwalk shops next to it. And it is in such a location that many times that I was down there, I did see people resting their, their drinks upon it, their goods on it, leaning up against it. So with, with that kind of, we've, we've built the little community around it. And it's only going to have more people hanging out, places to, places to stay that I wouldn't even, you know, if it doesn't make sense to paint or put the vinyl on it, that's one thing. But I think if we're concerned about potential electrocution hazard, that it should definitely be screened to begin with. If the, if the concern of the high voltage and the proximity to where people would lean up against it, put it on top of it, especially now, now being made aware of it, I would say that we kind of have a duty to make sure that it's screened. And however that looked, would be an opportunity at the same time to make it aesthetically pleasing.
So we do have warning stickers on all of our, all of our devices. And, and, you know, we don't have, we don't have someone out there patrolling our devices to make sure that people don't, you know, people don't, aren't ignoring those stickers. But the public is, is warned by the sticker on all of our devices about an electrical shock. Screening of our devices is possible, but we need to pick up about a 20-foot square area because the guys need about a 10-foot area in order to use the stick to get in there and handle the high voltage. So it's really not practical in that specific location to do any type of screening. The screening would be out on the sidewalk. And so it's just not practical. And again, we're in an urban environment where we see pedestals and boxes and, you know, all sorts of infrastructure on a day-to-day basis. It's just part of the urban landscape. And that just becomes part of, part of, you know, things that we all see every day in the downtown area, green boxes being one of them.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to sort out at this point. Is the concern painted boxes or is the concern electrical hazard? Because if the concern is electrical hazard, then painted or not, we, we should be making sure that, that we're preventing that from actually happening. Because I don't, I don't think that we just then go, we know there's electrical hazard and we've got a sticker on it. And that should be enough, but have a concern to not do what other communities do do and have weighed and have not had any cited examples for that, that I want to make sure that we're, you know, consistent with, with what the actual issue is. I, that's what I'm trying to, I guess, figure out, what are we concerned most about? If it's people leaning up against it and being next to it, or is it just the, the painting on it? I, I'm unclear.
The issue is electrical hazard. And, and, you know, we, we have, we would not encourage anyone in the public to treat an electrical box as a, as a, as a cocktail table. I mean, that, that's not what they're supposed to be used for. And it's not a bench and it's not a perch to sit in down and, you know, look down the block. They are, they are meant to be respected. I don't know, I don't know if the alderman, if all the aldermen had an opportunity to watch the six-minute video that I gave you the link to, but that was two young boys, I think their ages were eight and five at the time, who found an electrical box that happened to be unlocked. And I would hope that most adults would have the world knowledge and experience to know not to lift, you know, and open up an electrical box if they found it to be unlocked. But these particular boys, you know, they found that box to be unlocked and they opened it up and thought it'd be a great place to hide their sticks and, you know, a great place to hide in. And, you know, they talk about the experience and how much worse it could have been. They both survived. But again, it goes towards children playing around these boxes. And not, they don't have the world experience to know that they shouldn't be playing around these boxes. And I guess our point from the electric utility side is that if, if I'm a parent, I could teach my child, so the green box is not something to play around. But then if I'm a five-year-old and I see a box that's not a green box, but if the box with pretty rainbows on it, I'm more inclined to play around it because that box with pretty rainbows on it looks a lot like the same toys that I played with at school. And so that, that's, that's the distinction we're trying to make, Alderman.
I, I guess I see the points, but when we started to talk about this, I, you know, I went back to, I pulled it back up on my phone. They are worldwide, this is just like a giant fad right now, is painting electrical-
It's very trendy, yeah.
Whether they're traffic control lights or whether they're electrical boxes. You know, there's one in here that's a giant electrical plug and another one's a giant electrical switch. As long as the thing is secured, I mean, we walk by them every day. I mean, they're all over our downtown. If it was me, I'd like to see us do the painting downtown. Just take the downtown district, the little quadrant down here bordered, however you want to border it, and allow it only there for right now. Go for a year or two, see if we have any issues. See if we have somebody that decides they want to take their picture standing on top of the flowers or whatever gets painted on these. And as long as we don't have any issues with that, then I think we could expand that. But I'd like to see us do it downtown. You know, Batavia's really pushed the, the artist envelope of bringing artists into this town and really being a- town and really being a place where art can expand. And this is a really nice, simple little canvas that's out there that some, I think, very creative things could pop up on. So, you know, I think it's something that's interesting. I mean, we've done it with Bulldogs, we've done it with other things downtown to draw interest to our downtown. Why not use something that we have to have downtown? Something that we have to have along the street? And, you know, turn it into something that means something. Parents can still tell their kids that that's not something you play on. So, you know, and as long as the box is locked and secured, I don't think we have a worry as a utility owner and operator that would expose us to anything more than we're exposed to now with having them out, you know, a foot off the sidewalk or on the sidewalk.
I would hope that the allegation would not be made in the event that, you know, something did occur, that painting it made the warning signs inconspicuous. That, I guess that would be my concern.
Yeah, and I, I would think that, you know, we still have to leave the, whatever our standard is to have a warning sign on there has to remain on there, so. You know, and, and I'm sure that they can design around that, whatever they do. So, I think it's an interesting idea. Um, I think it's something that can add to the lure of downtown and why people want to come down and see this. I mean, we've got the one painting that's on the side of a building over here, and I constantly see people, even in the winter, standing next to it to take their little selfie picture with it, because you fit into that picture on the wall. So I think this is something else that could happen that way downtown.
Hey Alan.
Mark.
You know Gary? Hey Gary.
Hold on, hold on one second. Hold on a second, Mark's first.
Yeah, I, I agree with you and Marty, and I guess I have a question for Gary, because if we're, if the concern is an unlocked box, do we check to make sure that all the boxes are secure on a regular basis? Or whose responsibility is that?
There are, there are thousands of boxes out there, so no, we do not check, we do not patrol and look at all the boxes to make sure that they're secure. We do receive reports, probably handful, uh, throughout the year of an open utility box, and that is something that we respond to, uh, as, as, as a after-hours emergency or during the day of an emergency. Um, ninety-nine percent of those have all been phone and cable TV boxes. I can't recall the last time we found an electrical box open. Um, but I, I will relay a story that actually happened to a spouse of one of our workers at the city. Uh, she was mowing the lawn and ran her electric, ran her metal lawnmower up and came in contact with the side of a box, and she got a shock. She wasn't hurt luckily, but it turns out that the wire inside of that box had become loose, somehow came into contact with metal box itself, and therefore the metal box became energized to the point where she contacted it with, uh, with a lawnmower. So, I mean, those, those types of things, that's why these are all, these are meant to be, and it has gigantic sticker on there that says, you know, this box is a potential hazard, this box is not a plaything, this box is not meant to be any other than, you know, electrical box. And, uh, you know, the answer to the question is, we do not, you know, just like we don't, don't go out looking for every sidewalk tripping hazard throughout town, uh, when, when, when the hazards are, are, are brought to our attention, we address them. Same thing with your electrical boxes, we, we don't have the resources and the man-hours to go out and look at three thousand boxes throughout our town.
Yeah. I, Solomon Sato, I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead Mike.
Oh, I, I would just like to make a comment, I, I, I think one incident would be one too many. Uh, and Gary, I'm wondering if there's any repercussions as far as insurance is involved, if we're not marking these boxes properly and we're painting them? I know my wife works for, my wife works for ComEd, she is constantly telling kids to stay off the electrical boxes in the neighborhood, because they are hazardous, stuff does happen.
So we would have to, that goes to all, uh, to Laura's point, that, that any, any decoration of the box, we have to make sure that the warning labels remain conspicuous and obvious.
So perhaps this is something that we might need more research?
To, to Gary's point, to Gary's point, you know, if, if there's one instance where a wire came undone, even though the plate, the, the box is locked, that's a dangerous situation. I would, I would be opposed to painting. I, I guess I would, I would bring up a question is, is have anyone, has anyone seen after two or three, four years, what the boxes look like if they're painted? I mean, I would think of people climbing on them and just, they're just, the rain and snow and everything else, debris, that the, the paint probably gets pretty beat up after a while, and then it becomes a maintenance issue. You know, the boxes don't have to be painted, they're, they're done. So does, is there anything that's going on with the, with the paint? Or do we have to use a special paint, a high-dollar paint? You know, and bake it on? That's how these, these things are painted, they're baked. Uh, but I think the safety reasons are enough for me, that I would say, you know, on one incident like Mike Sato just said, one is too many, and then it could be, you know, catastrophic for the city. So I'd, I'd have to say, I'd be opposed to it.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Alderman O'Brien, I just would hate to see if, well, let's paint them and see how it turns out. Yeah, I, I don't think that's the way for us to go.
Alan?
Go ahead Abby.
Um, I guess, has anybody reached out? I mean, these have been painted for years around the country. Um, have we gathered any data about the, you know, the incident rate with these? Because again, the paint, the paint doesn't increase the likelihood of an electrical shock to someone. Um, and it's also that, I mean, I'm looking at some of these, and I'm looking at, you know, Google, Google Maps, the ones we have downtown. I mean, I'm, I'm not a large person, but I can't get on top of these boxes. Like, I don't know what kids can get on top of some of these, they're, they're very tall. Um, and so I just wonder what the likelihood is of someone getting shot when it's painted or not painted, because the risk does not increase, um, with the paint on it.
No, it's not the paint that, uh, increases the risk of shock. I, I think it's just the difference between it being the solid green where the, uh, hazard stickers stand out to the general public, so that it looks like an electric box that should be avoided, as opposed to painting it something that is Instagrammable, and, um, perhaps that people want to get up there and interact with. I don't think the, that, uh, the public would interact with the, the electrical box in the same manner that they would if it's, uh, painted as a piece of art.
And how many non-electrical boxes do we have downtown?
Non-electrical boxes?
I, I wouldn't know.
We only have control over one intersection, if you mean, um, the boxes that are associated with stoplights. That would be the, um, corner of Island Shumway and Wilson Street. The rest are, um, IDOT control devices.
Alan, this is Joe.
Go ahead Joe.
If, if somebody mowing their grass can get a mower close enough to a box and get electrocuted by a loose wire that nobody knows is loose, how concerned should I be about the box that's in my front yard, when I do the same thing several times a week all summer long? And do we have any kind of an inspection plan to go along and make sure there aren't loose wires? And this is, brings up a whole nother question about liability and potential risks in everybody's yard, if there can be a loose wire that nobody knows about and somebody cutting their grass can get. I mean, my kids have played, my kids grew up playing on the box in my yard, my grandkids have played on it. Now that I know we could get shocked and not know there's a loose wire, we may be changing some of that. But is there a whole nother set of risk factors in all these yards that we need to be talking about?
Well, that's the, the reason.
That's kind of the point, Alderman. It's kind of the point is that they are not playthings, and, and they do represent a potential hazard, and that's why we want the public to stay away from them. Um, you know, and, 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 no, to answer your question, you know, there, again, we don't go out and open them all up and inspect them all on a regular basis. That's not even a standard utility practice, um, to do that. Uh, basically the, the boxes are, are accessed, you know, during outage situations, the boxes are accessed in construction situations, um, or if there's a complaint, one, one way or the other. Uh, but, but as a routine matter, we don't go out and open every box, nor do we go out and check every box if it's had lock on.
And even if we had checked the.
But if somebody can mowing their grass, doing normal maintenance in their yard can get electrocuted, not playing on it, I'm thinking, I need to keep my mower two feet away from it? How, how far a distance should I keep my mower away every summer?
So in this instance, I just want to make it clear, if the person was not electrocuted, that they only received a, a shock from it, and it.
And if I have a pacemaker, is that enough of a shock to knock out my pacemaker? So there's, there's all kinds of ways that that can grow and, and be very realistic on any yard anywhere, and I don't see that paint on one downtown is gonna increase any, whatever.
Alan?
Go ahead Marty.
Yeah, uh, so the examples that were brought up to make sure that we're protecting the public already exist because of green boxes with stickers. The examples of kids already climbing on them, those exist. The examples that were cited as potential horror stories, those already exist. And that was the point that I was saying, if we have an inherent danger, if we are talking about making sure that it doesn't happen to one person, then it doesn't matter if it's painted or not. We should be looking for ways to safely conceal these if need be, because apparently the climbing hazard already exists if people are saying it's already happening. And I've seen it happening on the green boxes. The other communities that are doing it have signage that is already on them. They, most of the places that have designs on them, it's being called painting, but it's, most of them do not do painting. It is vinyl wrapping that can be pulled off and removed like a sticker, like the other sticker, that it can be incorporated in the design. Other communities decide how much they want it to look like, uh, art or not, and that goes through the process. That goes back to kind of what Abby was saying, is has the research been explored about what is going on, rather than trying to figure out worst-case scenarios that already exist that we're not addressing? We're kind of recognizing that those things do happen, and now we're just saying we're gonna turn a blind eye to it. So now it's, if we know kids are climbing on them, why aren't we protecting with screening?
So I thi- I think it's a little.
As was, eh, hang on, hang on. As was stated with, that these are utilitarian boxes and it's the urban landscape, that's true. It is the way that it looks now. And if other communities have done the empirical research to determine that it, it can exist safely in their communities without the, uh, worst-case scenarios happening, I would feel that we should explore that to learn more, because the benefits, as, as Alan stated, that it's all a trend now because it's not just for, because it's a pretty trend. It is a trend because people have been able to realize that it can make your downtowns look more economically viable, where people spend more, want to walk more, it goes to walkability, to see things. There is reasons for it, rather than just out of, oh, we want to do this for Instagram. That's not the case, because it's been happening before that. It has been happening for economically sound reasons, and other communities that are larger than us that have more resources have studied it. And I think we don't just necessarily dismiss it out of hand based on some potential scare stories, because I work in insurance and I know that, yes, you can have horror stories that go wrong, but you have to base that on the realistic expectation. Because if we want to make sure that it doesn't happen to one kid, then we should be locking these things up so that they aren't available, painted or not.
I was just going to share that from an industry standard, keeping the box plain with the stickers on it gives an indication to the public that these are, uh, dangerous utilities inside. And so it's, it, you know, it's not a matter of that, you know, both the painted and the, um, plain boxes, yet they both have the potential for kids to crawl on them, but it just makes it a lot more obvious when it looks like an electric box with hazard stickers on it, that it is a hazardous thing. And I think that was to Gary's point. But, yeah, they are, you know, um, interesting objects, um, when painted, but I guess we're weighing that with the concern over what could potentially go wrong.
Right, and I, I understand that, and that is where we can also have an educational campaign, because the ad stickers currently, or the electrical stickers do exist, and you can incorporate them as you, uh, design to talk about, eh, put them on there. If you want to highlight them extremely obvious while still, um, while still decorated, can possibly be done, because those are, those are value judgments that you can have. And it can also go to the ability to make sure that you have a communications campaign that these things, while they look nicer, still are dangerous. Because they're gonna have to learn that, because if they do go to Aurora, and they do, do go to Elgin, it's not like we're going to have our residents zapped in those communities.
And we'll have to look into the Elgin, uh, campaign, we were aware of the Aurora campaign, and those are not electric boxes, those are.
I think Naperville is also down there, downtown. The ones in Minneapolis, St. Paul are gorgeous. I took pictures of about forty of them while I was up there, so.
And we don't have to include the electrical boxes. That it was only, again, it was only because of the discussion for that one there. That one may be a separate issue by itself, that that is an electrical box, and it does not make sense to, uh, vinyl wrap it, paint it, whatever you want to call it, but it might make sense for that one to be screened due to its proximity for that location, and make a decision for that. Vice versa, if there are other boxes that are not electrical, that do not present the, uh, shock hazard, then the ability to explore what other communities are doing, I believe, is, back to Alan's point, we can, there, there is no reason that we could not explore that to make our community and our downtown more walkable and, uh, art-friendly.
I'd like to see us move forward with this, so that we have some kind of idea of what we're gonna allow, or what we're gonna do before we get to, you know, spring and summer, and then by the time we get around to making a decision on it, it'll be September, and they're gonna get covered, you know, snow up against them and along.
I think there needs to be some more investigated, you know, not only, you know, what else, you know, what boxes are available that are non-electric, but also the costs involved with this.
Well, I think this can be a project that we can go out to the community, either by, um, you know, a volunteer or a.
I, I don't want to sit there and do this, say that we're gonna do this, and put it out as a volunteer. I mean, we have a great community, um, but sometimes when it comes to volunteers, it's the same people over and over there volunteering in the community, and we have to be very conscious of that, of, you know, what they want to do. You know, maybe it is something to.
Every other public art thing that we've talked about, when we have discussions with the art community in this town, they're more than ready to step up and make that happen. So I don't think we're gonna have any problem with having a line of artists to, to design and, and paint boxes. I really don't think that's gonna be an issue. It's gonna be, what are we going to allow on what boxes in this town?
Right. Well, I, you know, I, I think that we've been talking about not just paint, but the vinyl wrapping. And so, you know, you have to decide that, you know, it's been brought up the point of how, you know, what kind of paint, and how's that gonna last in the elements, and the upkeep of that. Um, so I, I think there just needs to be some more investigation into the different elements that can be used, and, uh, the cost and what other communities are doing, and exactly how many boxes it would affect here in our community. Um, I, the electrical boxes, you know, they, they do make me nervous. I, you know, just because there could be that one time, one person, and as much as we try to educate. And as much as we try to educate our kids, kids are going to still go off and do stuff. And, but, you know, if we do have some other options, you know, that'd be great. You know, I'd be all for that, but I think we need to take a look at that investment.
Alan, I'd also join you on that, the exploring of the idea. But I think it is part of, you know, kind of to allay what Jennifer just said, you know, I don't think anybody's wanting to make dangerous situations. But there are opportunities that we can promote art and walkability. And this is a piece in public art and beautifying the downtown that can be achieved if we're, if we're going to look to what, you know, Aurora's, how they do it. Well, then I say go full on out and plagiarize their, how they do things to begin with and lift how they or other communities have art commissions and that inform, just like we do the bike commission and the environmental commission. We have a lot of really good people in town that would be experts, that would be able to answer a lot of these questions, not just on this narrow piece, but a more holistic, larger view that needs to probably explored not by itself.
I think working on utility boxes is enough for us right now to try to figure out what we're going to do with that. I mean, that's what we started off this discussion with. I think that's where we should limit it to and then make an, you know, an informed decision of what we really want to do with them.
That didn't mean right now.
I mean, I think if you really want to make them so that they're not something they're going to go after, put a skull and crossbones on them, giant lightning bolt on the other side.
Electrical outlet, be a opportunity for the parents to teach their kids not to stick their finger in an electrical outlet.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think there's a lot of creative things that could happen with them. And I think it's something that we should explore, you know, just add something different to this downtown. Anybody else want to chime in? Okay, we'll close this.
Alan, Alan, it's Abby. It has come up as an idea at the Streetscape Advisory Committee in the past. So we could look at Aurora's plan too and, and see if that's something that, if the committee would be interested, we could help facilitate.
Okay. All right. Now we'll move on to item number 21, which is the discussion of the Batavia Parklet Pedlet Program, review of draft policy document. Everybody got a chance to dig through this one and look at it? Okay, who wants to start this one?
I was hoping I was going to be able to bring it up, but technology is just not our friend this evening.
Looks like you have a couple of arrows up there. For those of you patiently waiting online, we're trying to get this on screen here.
We've had a ongoing day of just technology problems, seriously.
Yeah, really.
We've really had them.
It's been frustrating.
Including the fact that we've got some scam, scammers out now on the internet that are out here calling people up, saying, we're with such and such, and we've just bought the Batavia Electric Utility. And we're with Commonwealth Edison, you got to send your bill to this new email address.
I, I've heard two of those already today.
Yeah, well, we had one lose some money, we know of. And then the police are investigating that. And then I got browed coming in the door about 3:30 by some guy that was in wanting to know, have, did you, did you, your city council sell the electric utility and didn't tell us? And I'm saying, no, we didn't. I said, that's a scam.
Yeah, that's.
Well, you better get that out there. There's people all over the town now worrying about the city of Batavia sold the electric utility to Commonwealth Edison.
The, the other one is the, the solar electricity thing that, you know, you can get the ComEd rebate if you put up solar cells on your house. Well, not if you're not in the ComEd area.
Right, right. So that's, I mean, it's the whole thing is.
I got one of those phone calls last week and I had to actually ask them that. Thought it would be fun to ask, see how they responded.
And Mayor, you also sent me a friend request today from a new Facebook account too. So I don't think that's tied to it.
My Facebook account got hacked and the department and IT department decided I had to reinstall myself in it. That's a work in progress too. I say it's just been one glorious day of technology.
It really has. Oh, what are we doing now?
See what's going on.
All right, here we go. We got the Parklet Pedlet program up here. And so does anybody have any questions about it? We made it a Parklet Pedlet program, which might be a little confusing to folks who are not as familiar with the pedlet as they are with the parklet. But, so we put pictures of each of them on the cover. What you're looking at right now is called a pedlet. And that allows a retail space to utilize the sidewalk that is out in front of their establishment and direct the pedestrians around that area into what would otherwise be, as you can see there, two parking spaces. Whereas the parklet is utilizing those parking spaces for an outdoor space associated with an adjacent business. And they can be one parking space or two parking spaces. And then, so what we did was we looked at several cities' Parklet Pedlet programs. And we tried to take the best from each of those and put this into a document. We think Fort Lauderdale, Florida at the end of this document because we felt like their format was kind of the best and they had some good diagrams that we could use for our program as well.
Laura, I just got to say, I absolutely love it. There were some people that I know reached out to me that were a little, now, what is this? Just out of a little skepticism, they didn't understand it. But when they learned more, as I know that wasn't up over the weekend for people to kind of get. So it was huh? And as soon as it was explained, it was definitely, oh, that makes sense. Oh, that's, that's creative. And yes, on Fort Lauderdale, because that is the area that our, our family condo is down in that area. And love, love the look and how it's being utilized. It's, if we get a tenth of the way that it gets used down there, we'll be in revenue heaven.
Yeah, and I think I look at this and I think of all the things we've learned that are possible outdoors during COVID that we've gone through in the last year. This, to me, if we already had this plan up and running before we got to that, this would have been ready to go. I mean, this would have been something that would have been utilized by so many restaurants and so many places that could use something like this. You know, in the future, I, I still think that this takes a business and gives them the availability to have twice the seating space. You know, and to be able to not just survive, but thrive in downtown. So I think this is really important. And I also think it gives us another step up to the surrounding areas to be able to have things like this, if we have this. So I'm all for it. I think this is something that's going to really benefit businesses and may even attract some businesses that know that this is a possibility for them. So they know that when they really want to, they have the availability of more employees during the summer, more space outside during the summer and something that they can utilize to draw more people in. So I'm excited about it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's really cool. I think it's a great idea. Look forward to seeing these. So I'm, my next part is a little sarcasm to pull the other, our previous conversation into it. Technically, isn't it more dangerous because we're putting people closer to the street?
Oh, yes.
So, but it, so it's sarcasm on that, but that kind of goes back to our previous conversation is we're technically putting people at higher risk doing this. So that's why I don't see the difference between this and painting electrical boxes.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And that's one thing that kind of thought crossed my mind as we were looking at the boxes was, well, we're, we're doing this when we half close off a street and let people sit out in the street. And the reality is, again, people have to learn that. And, you know, one of the big things that we've talked about and preached about for the past 10 years is we need people to slow down, especially downtown. And if there's barriers and things that are out there to make people slow down or that they have to be slow around, that will help. And I think, again, it's a learned behavior. I mean, just like everything else, the way we set up downtown, people threw their arms up and screamed about bump outs when we started doing that. And now I think it's made a big difference. I think people really, you know, sometimes I even get kind of annoyed that people drive so slow down the street when I want to get somewhere. But it's the reality of the way the street is designed, it slows you down. I mean, it really does slow traffic down. Does anybody else have any comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you so much for this document and how much thought and detail went into it. It's, it's great. It's absolutely great. I had just a couple of questions comparing it to other ordinances that I'd seen in other programs that I'd seen. The non-refundable application fee plus 650. I didn't see the, I didn't see kind of that rental line item included in any other Parklet programs. Can you elaborate on that piece?
So we did. It's, you know, lower than some other cities and higher, higher than others. We tried to pick something that was in between the different municipalities that we were looking at. I, you know, I think it's over $1,000 in San Francisco where the Parklet claims to have been invented. So we, we just tried to pick something that was in between and would be where someone is taking away a public resource that we think that there should be some cost associated with the ability to generate revenue using public property.
So any of the smaller cities like around us in Illinois have that kind of fee attached to it?
We haven't found very many robust Parklet Pedlet programs in neighboring cities. Rockford had a bit of a start with one. Aurora had a bit of a start with one. They had two Parklets that were installed. So if you have a suggestion.
I'm looking at York bills right now. I see their application fees are 50. And I guess too, I like, I mean, I look at, I look at our parking spaces and think, I mean, what's our, what's our time limit on downtown parking? Is it two hours, three hours?
Two hours in some areas, three hours in others.
So, so a max, you know, ideally, we're only getting 12 to eight to 12 cars in those spots a day. But we're not enforcing those times and they're parking there for free. So if you only have, you know, 12 to, to maybe 24 people using a spot a day, whereas a Parklet could accommodate that many in an hour repeatedly, you know, turning over and generating revenue for that business and tax revenue back to us, it seems like the more productive use of the space. And so I, that's my only qualm about the, the 650 being a little steep.
Abby, I would agree with you on that because I think in the long run, this is something that we would probably want to encourage, especially as we have learned with COVID, that a little more flexibility in kind of melding our indoor/outdoor spaces. It, it might make more sense for some businesses to do some of these things. But if they see a high price tag, it would not encourage creativity. So I think, you know, if we, if we determine at a later date that, sure, a higher fee because it's working out so well, so be it. But in the meantime, when you're trying to encourage and think outside the box, we should make it the, remove the barriers as much as possible economically.
And I would also hope, I, I know that it says in here to consult, you know, that we strongly suggest you consult a construction professional, which is absolutely reasonable. But at the same time, I hope maybe we can attract some like Eagle Scouts or the building trades at the high school and, you know, make it a real community, something that a lot of people can get into. Because I think that would be a really cool, really cool piece to it.
Laura, I think, I think if I may, you know, one of the things to think about when we're looking at the fee, if we're looking at changing that, you know, we also do have an outdoor dining fee for use of sidewalks. So we would, if, if we're going to change it, you know, perhaps it's going to be equivalent to that, which I don't recall the exact amount. I think it's like $50 plus a certain amount of, like a dollar per square foot that they're using. So I think if we're going to do something like that, we should make them equivalent. You know, I do argue that, you know, it is use of public property for a private purpose where they're making money. And I do think that, you know, there should be some, some amount of revenue that's, you know, attributed to that for use of that public property.
And I think.
We could introduce a position about paid parking too then. I'm, I'm smiling and linking.
Yeah, okay, Abby.
Enforcement is always the issue there, more so than, you know, should we collect revenue for it? Probably it would just be.
Yeah, and then if you try to enforce it, you end up spending the revenue on enforcement.
Enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I don't think our situation's big enough where it makes sense to do that. But I guess the thing is, if we are charging for, you know, outdoor use of space already, I think we should try to make this somewhat commensurate with that so that they're on an even playing field for, for stuff that's already being used like that. But I do think that this is an economic incentive. Is, you know, if you give somebody a parking space to use and they can take care of 25 more people every day, that money gets generated for that business, which helps our community. And there's tax money that comes off of that that gets generated, which helps our community. And it makes, I think, makes other businesses thrive when you've got more activity there. So the, the reality is, I think we need to keep the fees low. There's got to be something because it's got to be, you know, there for the administration of this and, and making this plan work. But I also think it's got to be an incentive for somebody to do this. And if it's $100 per space or whatever the number works out to, to make it, you know, even with the, the other outdoor dining, I think that's where we should leave it. And then see, you know, does this just go crazy? And, you know, in a year or two, we have no parking spaces downtown because everybody wants to use them for something like this? I don't know that that's a bad problem.
Just to, just to clarify on the location, it has to be on city streets. So there's that one section on Wilson between Washington. That would not be eligible because that is state streets.
Um, not so much it wouldn't be eligible, eligible, but the city couldn't give permission for it. They would have to apply to I-DOT to be able to have.
So we're really looking up Wilson and River Street.
Yes.
Island, Chumway, Water.
Okay. So kind of similar to the area for the summer that people had. But it would have to be more of a parking spot area. So, okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I think it also promotes walkability downtown. Because if you do that and there are these outdoor areas, you're going to want to park somewhere and walk between them. You're not going to want to try to move your car from place to place if you want to go to two different places downtown. I think that, and it also benefits all the businesses around it if people are having to walk between these. So I think that, I just don't see a whole lot of downside to it.
Yeah, Alan, as you said, yeah, Alan, as you said, if you've been to other communities where they're already doing this, it's, it's great. You, you can see it, you can get the vibe and you, you immediately want to be a part of it. So again, this is, this is not, it might be new to our area, but it's not new to the world. And it's another plagiarized idea that I think is going to work well here.
So the next step in the process would be for us to bring in ordinance. So the next step in the process would be for us to bring an ordinance back, if that is the direction that you would like to give staff.
I'll vote yes.
Yep.
I think you're gonna get a...
Yeah, yes.
Yes, but I'd like to reduce fees and discuss that piece.
Yeah, and like I said, I think, I would hope everybody would agree with me, that if we can reduce the fees on this down to where there are even with the outdoor dining permits that we have, I think that would be the right thing to do. Because then it doesn't matter if you're just trying to do it on the sidewalk in front of your business, or you're trying to actually do the Parklet completely, you'd be able to spend the same amount of money to do it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think if you put that in the ordinance and bring that back to us, you know, before all the snow melts. You could have people donate their railings, they could have their own personal Parklet set up for a downtown business.
Something like that. Would something like that be able to, we would be able to codify that pretty soon, so that businesses could start planning for the spring. Yeah.
That would be my hope, that we could get it done for that. I mean, this is, I think this is a good, pretty self-explanatory packet that you've got here. I think it makes it easy for businesses to look at it and say, "Wow, I could make that work."
Yeah, kudos to Fort Lauderdale. They really had it organized very well. We started with a different format, and I think Scott Haynes brought this to us, and it really flowed very well. And then Griffin also, you know, tried to make it a Batavia-looking document too, so, thanks to his efforts. But it was a big team of us. I mean, we had fire department, police department, streets, public properties and services, community development, the building department. I mean, we had 12 people working on this for a while, so I, everybody deserves credit.
Thank you to everybody that worked on it. I think it will be an excellent benefit to our downtown. Okay, now we can move on to project status?
I really just have a couple of things. Mayor stole my thunder on the ComEd fraud that is going on. The police department responded immediately by putting out a public service message this afternoon, because that seems to be the thing that gets the most people's attentions and shares, is when the police department puts out information about those scams. But we have shared that on the city outlets as well, and we'll make sure to put it in this Friday's E-News Blast. I wanted to give a special thank you to the members of the fire department, who, over the weekend, on their own time, not during time of service, on their own time, took it upon themselves to go throughout the city. This was a crew of about 12, 12 people, who went throughout the city and dug out fire hydrants. In an emergency situation, it would be so critical to, what a difference, that the fire hydrants are exposed or they're not exposed. I know there's a lot of members of our community too, who have taken it upon themselves to make those fire hydrants especially visible as well. But I thought that was really nice, and I'd like to recognize the members of the fire department who did that, and thank them. Also wanted to let the public know that we are switching platforms for our hybrid public meetings. We're gonna switch to the Zoom platform, which I think that a lot more people are familiar with, and they're a little bit, the company that seems to be the most ahead of the curve in terms of understanding the process for municipal and board meetings, such as we have with public participation. So I hope that where people, the public who have participated might have found this format difficult, I hope that it'll get easier for them in the future. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions about particular projects.
I was just also gonna chime in about the digging out of fire hydrants. There was also some retired firemen that were out there that were part of that group, too.
Yes.
And I think, you know, I don't know how much more snow we'll have this year, but next year, I think we should have a contest around every fire hydrant. They should dig out the fire hydrant and build a snowman.
I love it. I love it.
At least the kids in my neighborhood, that was my deal, is I wanted to get them all to go out and dig out fire hydrants, and then build snowmen, and then I was gonna go around and pick out whose was the best.
Well, I've been seeing a lot on social media, and Mayor has mentioned in his Friday updates to the city, what people have been doing with snowmen and snow sculptures this year throughout town is just amazing. And I think a resident on Prairie Street was recognized by Tom Skilling in the pictures that he shares online. They painted flowers all up and down the sidewalk and up the path to their front door, that were all spring flowers, and that was really nice, too.
It was Wilson.
It was Wilson?
Just down from the fire department.
That's great.
Yeah.
There have been just a lot of really cool things all around town.
Penguins.
You know, people decided what to do, and, you know, there's Baby Yoda, there's a whole bunch of other, you know, really brightly colored, real cool things that have happened, so.
Yes.
Prairie Street's the one that had the snowman up.
Okay.
There was probably six or seven in different yards.
Kind of along that lines, knowing that, you know, maybe next year, there could be like a communication campaign about, kind of reminding residents that, yes, if it is in your yard, it is your responsibility. But some of the feedback that we did see is some people are elderly, and they're not able to do that. So I don't know if maybe the fire department can come up with, you know, if you're not able to do it, contact the fire department or something to maybe where they can help out, or the streets department have like one place where they can contact where, you know, somebody can come and...
Great idea.
Do that for them.
Sure thing.
But probably next year, we'll get no snow.
Of course.
Yeah, we'll get a plan all set up like that, and then it won't snow.
Right.
Okay, does anybody have any others? Anybody online got anything tonight? Just a reminder, as we're talking about the snow clearing and everything, make sure we keep drains clean.
Yes.
I've noticed quite a few streets already that seem to drive down them on test drives, and they're already flooded. And it really hasn't melted a whole lot yet, so keep track of those. If not, entertain a motion for adjournment? So moved. We have a second?
Second, Callahan.
Okay. Motion by you, or second by Callahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're done for tonight.